Well, in the middle of the silly season, we're gonna talk to another, and this one a true Milfordian, another true Milfordian who has stepped up and said, "I wanna help our kids." So, we're gonna start tonight by me tipping my hat to one of seven people who are doing more than talking about helping our kids, who are really standing up saying, "I'm willing to work to help our kids." So, let's start with an introduction.
Good evening. My name is Megan Hornberger, and I'm a candidate for the Milford School Committee. It's great to meet you, Al.
Now, Hornberger.
Hornberger.
I don't remember that name.
Perhaps not. My husband's family's from Pennsylvania. I was born and raised in Milford. My dad's a Holland and my mom's a Fitzpatrick.
I was gonna say...
Those might be familiar names.
Fitzpatrick, I kinda remember, 'cause I went to school with Fitzpatrick Mark.
There were seven of them, so...
Yeah, there were a lot. And then the Holland family has been in Milford for quite a day.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so after I had my first child, you know, we moved back home, and there's something to be said for living close to your family when you're raising children.
Now, I've gotta ask you. Let's see if you pass the true Milfordian test.
Absolutely.
Do you live within two miles of your mother?
Probably technically it's two and a half, but yeah, absolutely.
I always kid my daughter, saying she's now a true Milfordian, third-generation Milford, and she lives within two miles of her mother.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's fabulous, yeah.
It's great to see people come back.
It's interesting, you know, certainly born and raised here and can honestly say never felt more connected to the community than when my first son went to school. And so, that's really, you know, what's brought me here tonight. It's a great community to raise children.
And that was what pulled us. I mean, loved living in DC, enjoyed living in Paris. All of a sudden, I got a daughter. I can't imagine wanting to raise them anywhere but the center of the university or in Milford.
It feels that way when you're here, I can assure you.
Well, as I always said, 28,000 people know 6 billion need to be educated. So, I'll start off with the same question I start every political show.
Sure.
"I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?"
Absolutely. I hope you'll vote for me, because I'm a hard worker, a proficient communicator, and an effective collaborator. And I think those are important skills that I could bring to the school committee. Fundamentally, Al, for me, community service has just always been an important part of my life. I went to Milford High School, was active in the Big Brother, Big Sister program, as well as the CARE program, went on to Providence College, volunteered there for four years at an organization called the Smith Hill Youth Center, which is a center for underprivileged kids, and really valued that experience. After school, you know, the first role in public accounting, not a lot of opportunity for community service. And then my second job was a lot of international travel. But after that, I got a role at Benjamin Moore's Corporate Headquarters down in New Jersey, and there was actually a senior living facility across the street. So, I used to volunteer there on a regular basis. And then, since coming back home, I've been a volunteer at Milford Regional in their Compassionate Companion Program, and really for the last six years in the Milford Public Schools, on PTOs, in the PTO Board, on school councils, certainly active in the classroom when I can. So, I think I'm committed to service, and I'm certainly committed to our town.
Well, I wanna go through the school council.
Absolutely.
Because I've always had a soft spot.
Sure.
I was on four when I was banned. Soon as I got on the Finance Committee, I was told, "Can't be on both." But it was amazing how much you really got to learn about the school. If we start and we take a step back and say, "What do you think the three biggest challenges that Milford faces that you would face on the school committee would be?"
Sure, and I think I have two sort of instinctual reactions to that question. The first is that I view this entire process like a job interview. I wanna learn as much as I can. The current and former school committee members have been super helpful to me, as well as the administration and teachers, in teaching me and providing me knowledge so that I can learn. And certainly, if I'm afforded the opportunity in April, I will view that as day one on the job. And I do not wanna come in. I wanna come in with an open mind. I don't wanna walk in day one. I haven't done that in 18 years of professional experience and say, "I know all the problems and I have all the solutions," because I don't. That said, I have learned a lot over the past two months. So, three top challenges today in my mind certainly would be serving our diverse demographics. You know, our demographics are very, they span a range of needs, from students that come in and don't speak the language to students who are just thriving academically and need to be challenged. And we need to serve all of those needs, and so that's a challenge. And how do you do that, and how do you help all of those children? So, that certainly is one. We need to improve our accountability rating. We don't wanna be a Level III school, and so we need to improve upon that. I know part of that may just happen naturally, because my understanding is they're changing how they're actually doing that assessment, and so we may just fall out of that. But certainly, that's an area we wanna improve. And our infrastructure, our infrastructure's gonna need some updates. And that's a, you know, a big investment, a big capital investment for the school and for the community. And that's an area that we need to focus on as well. So, those are some top.
But you've gone through the Milford School System.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, you already, you're kind of tipped off as to what goes on. What year did you graduate?
95.
Oh, you're a baby.
Should've made you guess.
I was gonna say, you're a baby. No, I won't guess. 'Cause I was 74, so that really shows you. I mean, Paul Revere and I walked down the halls together of the new high school. When you talk about the diverse population, there are a lot of people who are worried. You know, nobody overtly says, "Well, I'm worried that because of these ELL kids that my child doesn't get as strong of an education as they could." How would you answer that?
Yeah, I mean, I think if you look at the programs of offering in Milford, it's top-notch. I mean, we have 19 AP classes. You know, we have almost 50% of the kids that take an AP class. At ninth grade, I think we have, you know, 87% of the students take a foreign language. Milford offers such a variety of programs that I think there's something for everyone. I think the diversity of needs makes it challenging, because it's not that you're just dealing with this one subset. You need to serve everyone, and so there's a resource allocation there that has to happen. But no, I don't think that that is detrimental. And I actually think it helps prepare our students for the real world, because the real world is not homogeneous.
And then, to me, that's always been one of Milford's strengths.
Absolutely.
You know, we steal from so many different cultures, and we benefit from it.
Absolutely.
You know, when I grew up in the Heights, I always called Water Street the Great Equalizer. 'Cause the kids would come up from Lubieav, and they were archro... Or the Plains, the Italian kids from the Plains. They'd come up to our side of town, and you'd laugh, 'cause as soon as you went over Water Street, down to Hopedale, well, now they're family. You know, and I always knew that if anybody in Hopedale picked on me, you know, the cousins or brothers from Lubieav or the Plains, they'd be right there to back me up. And it was important that I understood that people's backgrounds were different, but they all brought something special to Milford.
Absolutely, and we need to, and we should capitalize that. And I think in a lot of ways, we do, and I'd love to see that continue.
How do you make it so that people understand? Because if you've looked at school choice numbers, there's a lot of people choicing out a lot more than I can understand. Some of it is they're worried about the quality of education. I can't figure out what other areas would make somebody or entice them to leave.
Sure, I think school choice is an important and an expensive topic, so I think it definitely deserves a lot of attention. The current marketing subcommittee of the school committee is doing a lot of work around that. I think it'll take a little bit of time for us to get some more traction on it. What's interesting to me, Al, about school choi... We talk school choice, right? And you typically hear this 190, maybe 200 students that are choosing out. I'd love to take a more comprehensive look and say, "Okay, these amount of students are choosing out. These amount of students are homeschool. These amount are going to charter schools, or private schools, or parochial schools, or voc tech schools. Why?" And really understand that sort of more comprehensively. My instinct tells me we're losing some of our, you know, top performers to other schools, which certainly affects, you know, our scores. And so, we need to understand that and figure out how we can address some of those root causes.
But how do you do that? Do you have any idea?
Sure, I mean, I think surveying first and foremost as anonymously as possible, because you want people to feel able to give you answers, right? And you need to have, you know, either forums or, you know, different online surveys where you can extract some of that information. It would be great if we could more collaboratively with some of the places they're going. So, okay, for every incoming student, have them fill this out, and we'll do the same, and, you know, do some information sharing, because certainly there are students that need to be educated or would be better served in other areas. But fundamentally, we should want to educate all of Milford's children in Milford, and that should be our goal.
You know, and it's interesting, because I think it was my daughter who's up at the high school that put it in perspective, where she said, one night, we were sitting around, she goes, "Dad, my job as an educator is to get every kid to their potential, and maybe a little bit more."
Absolutely.
And she goes, "But I have to realize that not every one of my kids with special needs have the same potential. But I ought to do everything I can to get them there. And if I do that, I haven't done anything special. I've done my job."
Certainly, and it's a challenging job, so she shouldn't underestimate that. You know, I sat down with Milford High Principal Josh Ottlin recently, and he used a term which really resonated with me. "Look, we wanna set these kids up for life success." And that doesn't necessarily translate into a great MCAT score. Certainly, we want our students to do well and perform well on those tests, but that's just one component of a whole student. And I believe in Milford, we address the whole student, which I think is phenomenal.
Now, we've had people say that they don't believe Milford students are being prepared for success. If you heard that, how would you answer it?
I mean, personally, sometimes I pinch myself when I think about not only the opportunities I've had, but where I am in my life and my career. And certainly, that education is founded in Milford. So, personally, I would have a hard time with that. I look at, you know, the students who are coming out of school today and the schools that they're going to, and I would have to say that's just not true. If there's someone who slips through the cracks, I mean, I think we should look at that and address that, but I think that's a one-off. I think fundamentally...
Well, being a friar isn't your lowest common denominator of a school.
Absolutely.
You know, that's a pretty challenging school to apply and get into.
Certainly, and it was, you know, a top choice for me, and I was able to go there. So, and I went on to get my MBA and Masters of Accounting at Northeastern. And certainly, all of that was funded on K-12 education in Milford, which I'm extremely proud of, so absolutely.
So, what do you tell parents when they say, "Will my child get a full education?"
Sure, and I think social media today, Al, there's a lot of sort of negative information or perception out there. I think it's just really unfortunate, and I would honestly encourage anyone who has that sort of attitude, call up an administrator and ask to take a tour of one of these schools. I think you'd be really impressed. I think if you walked around and you saw what's going on on a day-to-day basis. You know, my oldest is at Woodland currently, and, you know, participated in the STEM Club there, and, you know, Science Teacher of the Year. You know, Dr. Gilmore is the one who's teaching that program, and that's just one-off example. We have a lot of, you know, phenomenal things going on in the schools.
Well, it's certainly hard not to feel like Woodland is all that it can be.
It better, absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, I was absolutely amazed when I saw all the facility improvements offered to our children, the breakout rooms and...
And I think it creates a lot of an excitement and a lot of energy, so it's great to see that happen and, you know, have 1,000 students that are taking advantage of it currently. So, yeah, absolutely.
Quality of our educators, what would you comment on that?
Yeah, I can't say that I'm in tune, you know, at the higher levels. My experience today really has been at the elementary.
Well, but talk about, your kids have interfaced with a number of educators already.
Absolutely, and my favorite thing is when you start to talk to other people, you know, "Who do you want them to have, or who do you hope they have next year?" And across the board, you can't go wrong. Do you know how good that feels as a parent to hear, "You can't go wrong"? I mean, it's such a relief. So, I think we do have top-notch educators. I think we need to equip and enable them as much as we can to be successful, because it's a challenging world and a challenging time to be a teacher. It was always a big job, I think even more so today, both with some of the struggles that our children come to school with and, you know, just take safety. It's a challenging time, and so we need to equip them as much as possible to make them as successful as they can be.
Now, some of the changes that seem to be occurring is, when I was there, and again, I'll admit, that was with Paul Revere and the rest of the crowd, we really thought our teacher's job was to educate children. Raising the children was the family's responsibility. You know, when I think of the Hollands, the Fitzpatricks, I kind of thought family was important. You know, I can't say it now, because it'd be taken the wrong way, but, you know, if I did something less than intelligent, you know, "Beat me, do anything you want," and you can't use those words anymore, "but just don't call my father." You know, today, doesn't it seem like we're asking our educational staff to almost pick up some of the "raise our children" spectra?
It certainly feels that way, you know, and I think whether it's the time and everyone is so busy, I don't know where it gets lost sometimes. And certainly, I'm guilty, right? You come home some days, and it's been a long day, and you're tired, and, you know, you feel like, "Did I give my kids everything they needed?" But certainly, you wake up tomorrow and you try even harder. But I think a lot of that is unfortunately put on teachers, and I think a lot of the social-emotional learning and efforts that are putting in place there are helping to resolve some of that, because if a child comes to school with anxiety or, you know, with different challenges, it's hard to learn. And so, I think we're trying to address some of those so that we can educate them as best as possible in today's world. But certainly, the parents absolutely own responsibility and accountability, and we need to be helped.
You know, I find it tough, 'cause I remember, now, we had three against two. You know, I had my sainted mother, my darling bride and I, and only two ungrateful offspring that we had to try and keep up with. I don't know how some of the single parents, you know, when you've got two or three kids and you're only one, how they do it. It just amazes me.
Absolutely. I mean, we're doing it, you know, in my house right now with two parents and with, you know, two grandparents right down the road, and it's still a challenge.
Yeah, across the street, not like it's...
Yeah, so my heart absolutely goes out to, you know, someone that's trying to do that on their own. It's really challenging, absolutely.
And you're probably one of those parents, like my daughter, who forced me to play with my grandchildren, my grandson.
Absolutely. They, they love it.
Of course. I mean, we go through that all the time. I put a gym downstairs to try and lure her and my son-in-law in, and they'll come in to work out, and then they force me to play with my grandson.
So great.
You talk about security. I mean, everything you read in the papers, you see in the media, it's not a pleasant movie. Do you feel the kids in Milford are secure?
I do. I think in general, what's happening is heartbreaking and tragic. And I think it's certainly, it's awful that anyone should go to school and not feel safe. I mean, to put that on top of everything else that you're coming to school with, I just think that's heartbreaking. Certainly, I feel like the students in Milford feel safe. When I head to the schools, you know, trying to get in, there's certain controls in place that make me feel safe and make me feel that the school's as secure. So, yes, I would say...
Yeah, I got stopped. You know, and at first, like, "Well, I've been here five times in the last month." Then I thought about it, I said, "This is a good thing."
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, for the 30 seconds that I'm inconvenienced, if that keeps the kids one notch more secure, we should feel good about that.
Absolutely. The other piece that resonates with me, Al, is, you know, you hear so much about the social-emotional learning. In a lot of these cases where these tragedies have happened, you hear communities say, "We're not surprised." And so, I think the fact that we're trying to reach out and really pull children in and make them feel connected is a huge asset to our community and something we should really keep working on.
Well, you brought it up, coming back to Milford, and you know different families, you know, where I can laugh at your uncle and remember, you know, your two sides of the family. That really does mean a lot to me. 'Cause it also means that if I saw a Holland or a Fitzpatrick in need of help, well, you know the families, of course you're gonna want, you're gonna wanna help.
I think that's something that you just see in general in Milford, which is why I think it is such a great community to raise a family. I think people genuinely care about each other. I was born and raised here, truly have not, never felt as connected to the community as when my son started school. We've made so many great friendships and just incredible people. And so, I would love an opportunity to get back to that community.
Now, you start looking at questions about the immigration issues. People will say, "Well, we have an immigration problem in Milford. We have a lot of kids who come in and are illegal or don't speak English." Do you see that as a big problem?
Certainly, we have a lot of students who come in not speaking English, so that's a fact. You know, illegals, that's not the school system's issue to address, so I wouldn't attempt to touch that as a school committee member. Our job is, or the job of the school committee is to serve the children that come. And so, if there's students who come and they don't speak English, we need to figure out ways to give them that education. I think, again, diversity should be viewed as an asset, and I think the fact that we are able to service all these students is an asset.
You know, it's funny, because I'm very happy that nobody ever told me I was one of the problem kids. 'Cause a number of us came from the Heights and got out and said, "What language are these weird children speaking?" 'Cause, I mean, it was my darling bride who, one time, when she first came to the house, said, "Don't you ever speak to your mother in English?" I said, "Of..." I was gonna say, "Of course," but then it dawned on me, "No. She's 94 years old. To this day, I don't think I ever speak to her in English unless there's people around."
Sure.
So, we never knew that we were problem children. We just kind of blended in and learned.
Absolutely. If you have an eight-year-old who's coming to school, you know, a six-year-old coming to school for the first time, they should feel welcomed, and they should feel like they're welcomed in that community and that school.
Now, when I start looking at Milford in general, there's always the question that comes up about profanity, and are we using words like "two-and-a-half override" and "dead exclusion"? What's your feelings on those?
I think we've been fortunate in general in terms of, you know, where we are from a financial standpoint. I think we need to be fiscally responsible with how we approach things. It does dawn on me that, you know, coming up, we have probably some significant capital expenditures to start to think about, but we need to plan for them, right? And we need to put the right steps in place so that it's not a surprise when it happens. I think, you know, you look around, Milford is a solid, a financially solid town, and we have a lot to be proud of.
Look at facilities. Now, I would say three to five, we're probably okay at this point, $60 million later. What do you think about the high school?
So, professionals are gonna do an assessment of that, so I'm not gonna try to trump that. I think you need to leverage, you know, where you have people come in and sort of can provide a broader picture and assessment, and then figure out, "Okay, these are our three, two, three, four options, and what makes the most sense to do?" So, those would be decisions that I think we need to start to make over the next few years. I don't today, I can't tell you today what my plan would be or what I would suggest.
I don't think anybody has a truly thought-out plan for the high school yet. I mean, as soon as we finished Woodland, I mean, I got criticized, 'cause they said, "Why are you putting away more money in stabilization?" I said, "There's a school coming." They said, "What do you mean? We just finished." I said, "Yeah, but there's another one, somewhere about eight or 10 years from now." 'Cause I don't see the high school, one, the possibility of raising it. I mean, when we did Brookside, that was 300 little cherubs, and we had to build half a school between Memorial, High School, and Woodland Portable. Where would you put 1,200 kids?
Absolutely, absolutely.
But, you know, I look at the high school, and it's a fortress. You know, when I look at the walls and the way it's constructed, it's a bunker. You can't knock it down, but it needs to be updated.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we want our students to be competitive and be learning in an environment, you know, where they come out of school competitive. Great point about Woodland Elementary. I just think it's created such amazing energy in that school, and it's really excellent for a student to be able to experience that. So, it'll be great for that next round of children who get the high school.
Do you have any idea, if you had the magic wand at the high school, what would you focus on?
For facility purposes?
Yeah.
I mean, there's so much great potential. Certainly, state-of-the-art, you know, science labs and technology, more space for vocational, technical-type programs that our children have done so well in. Fieldhouse is an exciting opportunity. I mean, there's so many things out there that I think could be contemplated. So, if we win the lottery, we can talk about that.
Well, I think your first point was more profound, if we plan for it. You know, you think about it, and I've gone on record to say, eight to 10 years from now, I'd love to see a new wing put on the high school. And then you can move A Wing into the new wing, renovate A Wing, move B Wing, and somewhere along the lines, balance the academic with a real fieldhouse. You know, so our athletes. When I go up to Shoesbury and I look around, and I sit there and say, "Our kids deserve this."
Yeah, and truly, it's more than the students, the community. The community benefits from having, you know, a really great facility. And look at how much community use is done for us. So, absolutely, it's the entire town that benefits.
Yeah, Lenny Morcon seems to have his reach everywhere, which is a great, great thing. If you look at programs, are there any specific programs that you'd like to see added, reduced, changed?
I think fundamentally, I have no personal agenda. I'm not interested in this role, because I want a specific program. I think there are a lot of great ideas out there. You know, I love hearing about the concept of, you know, bringing back foreign language at the early elementary level. I think that's fabulous. I'd love to see sort of the cost and specifics of that program. More enrichment opportunities, I think, are also fantastic. I think there's a wide array of opportunities out there. Fundamentally, I'd love to see more recess time for our younger kids. You know, I think there's a whole gamut of things that can be explored. And I'd love to see, you know, the teachers and the administration, who really have the best firsthand knowledge, bring forth something that they truly believe in, and do a business case for it and understand it. And if it's worthwhile, absolutely invest in it.
A lot of parents, visitors, potential residents, look at the school system and look at our MCAT scores and say, "Boy, you're a lot lower than towns around you. I don't think I wanna play." What would you say to them?
Well, certainly, we're lower than towns around us. I mean, I think if you were, let's take Holliston as an example, right? If you live in Milford, a third of your population comes to school not speaking English. If you go to Holliston, that's maybe 7%. On the same wave, economically disadvantaged, we have about a third of the population who's, you know, considered economically disadvantaged. Holliston's about 7%. Our population is very different, and so I don't think it's fair to compare us to surrounding towns, because I think we are actually so unique that that's not a straightforward comparison. I think if you compare us to towns who are similar to us, we're much more in line with the scoring there. So, I don't think it's a fair comparison, because I don't think the populations are similar enough.
Yeah, but when it comes down to my girls, I'll admit, I'm a bit biased. I have the most beautiful, most intelligent, most everything.
Of course.
'Cause they're mine. So, the real issue, I'm not saying as a parent is, "Will you take care of my girls as best they can?" You know, it's nice that you compare me to any other... I don't live there. I live at the center of the universe, and all I care about is my girls. I mean, I can try and be objective on anything, but my girls. You know, there's no objectivity there. You know, that's my life. That is the thing that I value most. So, what do you tell parents like that? How do they get the best education for their kids?
Sure, and I think if you look overall at the population, we have students, if you are most interested in test scores, we have students who are doing phenomenally well on those tests. I think if you look at the breadth of program that Milford offers, it would be hard to beat. I mean, you couldn't go to, you know, a smaller, next-door community and get some of the programs, 19 AP classes, the foreign languages, the athletics, the music, the arts. They're just not offered. So, I think you have to look at the entire picture and not single out test scores.
And the AP courses, I don't think people really understand. 'Cause I remember '70 through the end of '73, '74, we were told we had to leave Milford. There were three of us that had to go to Franklin to get courses, 'cause we had run out of Biology and Chemistry. And luckily, back then, Uncle Paul Raftery, who I'll never stop saying good things about him, he sent three of us over to Dean Jr.
Excellent.
Yeah, scary. "We're gonna go compete against those big people." You know, they're college kids. No, they're only six months older than us, but we were able to get the next level of science education. Well, today, kids don't have to leave Milford for that, right?
Not only for the AP side, though, but also for sort of the early college opportunities, right? Where kids are able to take courses in high school and get college credit. So from an economic standpoint, that's phenomenal. You leave school and you already have certain credits that could then be applied. So now colleges become even more cost effective, maybe for a student who wouldn't have had that opportunity. So I think we're doing it on both levels, which is fantastic.
And I mean, that's something that people don't think about.
Absolutely.
Until all of a sudden, I mean, I don't know what PC is right now, but I know HC is like, Holy Cross is about sixty-four thousand a year. My whole year, senior year, was six thousand dollars. Room and board, everything. And I was amazed how, I mean, my mom worked at Draper, my dad worked at GM, but somehow they scrounged the money together to send me. My last check for Emily, the last month, was five thousand dollars. You know, it was over five grand a month. So if you can shave a semester.
Absolutely.
Oh my God, that's thirty thousand dollars to my advantage.
Absolutely, significant.
And, I mean, you think about it, if I can get exposed to those courses, that's amazing.
And that's really, I think, where they're starting to see the traction. If you're more likely to take the class and succeed in the class and then go on to school, you're more likely to stay in school, complete school, and you're already a step ahead. And that's what we want for our students, is lifelong success, so.
Now, how do we deal with, it's always been a pet peeve of me. Because I get scared about, my father, and I've said it many a time, he came from Portugal to Milford in the forties. He had four years of education. If you put him into an organic chemistry class, probably wouldn't do well. He's not an academician. But give that man a tool, he was an artist. He could do anything with tools. I was always amazed. Today is so different because when we were in school, you had a path. If you wanted to evoke, you went to BVT. If you wanted to go to college, you stayed in Milford High. But what happens to people who want to learn a trade, who aren't academicians? Can't get into BVT, what do we do for them?
Yeah, I think that's where we're really, you know, making leaps today in different, a variety of programs. You know, hospitality and banking come to the forefront because those are more sort of recent ones to be implemented. But there's a variety of programs being offered, and so I think Milford is really looking to step up those exact type courses and trades and skills and certifications so that we're sending all of our students out and really setting them up for success, absolutely. So I think Milford is adding components of that to address that.
And that's important to me because we have forty-two hundred kids. You know, none of them more special or less special than all the others. And we've got to find a way of addressing opportunities for all of them.
Absolutely. And in some cases, college is not the right decision because all you're gonna do is incur a significant amount of debt and potentially, you know, not have a job that's enough to offset that versus starting in the workforce, getting a solid job, getting invested in a company, you know, and making strides there. You know, twenty years out, you've probably done pretty well for yourself. So yeah, absolutely, we should be training them for all aspects of life.
And it's significant, I mean, you think about it, a PC, an HC, that other Jesuit college, you know, BC. We'll always root for BC as long as they're not playing Holy Cross. But when they do, it's like, bad pigeons, bad pigeons. It's a quarter million dollars. To walk out with a degree that, you know, doesn't get you an opportunity for a position and have a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of debt. All right, oh my God, how do you ever dig out of that hole?
Absolutely, it's frightening.
You know? What would you change if you had something where you said, I have the magic wand? I can make any changes I want to the Milford school system. Where would you go?
Low hanging fruit. I'd get rid of the cell phones at the high school in class, that drives me crazy personally.
Could I start in my house?
Yeah, exactly.
Even my darling bride has her cellphone somehow surgically implanted? It drives me crazy to watch my children, my darling bride, everywhere they go, there's a cellphone attached.
Yes, mindfulness, it's good to be present. And I just, you know, when you think about how hard teachers are working to then have a student who's not paying attention, low hanging fruit.
Are they allowed to bring cell phones into a class?
I think probably there's the policy and there's the reality.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we.
Moving on.
That would be rather easy. You just get some kind of Star Trek blocker that wipes out all cellphone signal.
We'll put Dr. Joseph on that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, you sit there and say, okay, I want an interference signal blasted. Now there's no cell phones.
I just think about it, you know, when we went to school, that wasn't an issue. And I mean it more in terms of the social media and the social interactions that didn't have to take place in that forum. And I'm grateful that my experience wasn't during that time. And so I really feel for kids today because I think there's a lot of pressure and a lot of added stress.
When I was there, the stone tablets would give you away if you tried to do messages during class.
We were on paper, but still.
You were advanced, we were on stone tablets. Okay, anything else that, low lying fruit you can think of?
I think there's a lot, you know, in the way of technology and different programs that we would love to explore if financial resources were unlimited. You know, they're moving towards this concept of the curriculum instructors within the classroom. I think that's a phenomenal, the instructional coaches, rather, in the classrooms, which is a phenomenal idea because I think the more we can empower our teachers and have them, you know, get the professional development and the support they need, you know, the better job they'll do, and every child benefits.
Well, we just put a significant amount of money into Chromebooks. Your child's using Chromebooks.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Talk to me, I spent six hundred thousand dollars, I'm a taxpayer. I want to know I got my money's worth.
Absolutely. So I think it's fantastic in terms of the opportunity where, you know, you're in a class and the instructor has completed a lesson, and now there's opportunity to move on. And you really can individualize, even, you know, he's in the fifth grade, individualize in terms of what they're working on by the fact that they have this, you know, device now in front of them versus trying to deal with, you know, twenty-five students separately. So experiences like that. Also, it's 2018, you know, we're trying to prepare these students for the real world, and the real world involves technology.
Well, we had the same issue, you know, at the studio here. When we first started off down the back of Comcast, we had a studio that was a hundred twenty degrees. Because if you went any further, you got all the junk that was, you know, and again, I joke, but when Paul Revere installed the equipment, it was probably state of the art.
No doubt.
But it was hard to get the kids' interest in analog technology. Now, all of a sudden, here we are in a studio that is pure state of the art, and you got high school kids, you know, Caitlin running the program.
She's doing a great job, by the way.
Yeah, I mean, she's the one controlling the cameras, controlling the edits, you name it, she does it.
Excellent.
I mean, to me, that's exciting.
Absolutely. And those are fantastic opportunities, right, that we should be looking for? Because think about how much more prepared she is than someone who's never had an experience going to get educated.
So now the Chromebooks, have you had a chance to look at the Chromebook initiative since your child's using it?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it's exciting, right? I think it's at their fingertips. They don't bring it home, which I also, right now, like, so it's, you know, it stays at school. But it's definitely a lot of him.
Because they're anybitty.
And they're expensive and they break, yes.
The kids, I mean, you think about it, every time they came home with that backpack, I was always scared to put my hand in there because I really believed Jimmy Hoffa was living in one of my backpacks and he'd pull me in. But, you know, you start thinking about kids in the third, fourth, fifth grade, they're gonna be brutal.
Absolutely.
But at least everyone gets to use it at school.
Absolutely. And I remember, you know, participating in the Books and Beyond program at Memorial School. You know, the students have to read, and then they move through this map, it's very exciting. And the teacher's saying, well, some of the students don't participate because they don't have books at home. And, you know, you think about children who may not have access technology. This affords them the opportunity, you know, to be exposed to it and to be learning some of the same skills that students that do have it at home have, so.
That would kill me. I mean, years ago, Sue Edmonds from the library came, and she said, I'm really having a problem because at the end of the school day, everybody from state, not everybody, but a large amount of kids pour into the library. And as more and more of them brought devices, the bandwidth went down to one electron per day moving down a wire. So we made a significant investment in expanding the bandwidth so that each kid could experience, you know, using electronic devices to do their homework.
Absolutely. You know, and you think old school, you know, I remember Robbie had an assignment, and he's like, oh, I'm like, well, go write it up. He's like, well, can I type it? Of course you can type it, right? You know, you forget that it's so accessible, so.
Yeah, but even that word type, when the kids came to me and said, Mr. C, your intro is a bit tired.
Oh.
I said, oh? They said, yeah, that analog printer sound has to go. And I'm thinking, analog printer? I'm thinking the old bzzzz, no, it was a typewriter. And then I had to realize that these young kids never grew up with an IBM Selectramatic. They had no idea why anybody would use a typewriter.
Whiteout?
A whiteout, oh my God. Yes, I could just imagine that you could see them putting it on the screen. As we look towards, you know, we talked about the high school, Woodland, there's a lot going on, not only academically, but on the other side. Tell me, when people say, all they have to do is know how to read, write, and cipher, they don't need any of that other stuff, what would you say?
Good luck in the real world. I mean, certainly, there are skills that having, you know, some components of that are important, but there's just so much more. And there's so much more to life, and we should all want more. So I think it's good that we're able to offer so much. And, you know, again, whether it's a music program or an art program or athletics, that makes a whole person. And certainly for our college-bound students, you can't just be an A student and expect to get into a good school. You need to be really a well-rounded individual. I mean, look at our Special Olympics program, our Best Buddies program. Milford offers a lot, and I think our children, you know, do well by participating in those programs that are offered.
I think a lot of parents don't know that. You know, that if you get involved, I was involved in a scholarship review board at Holy Cross for the Holy Cross Club. And I actually joked and said, well, out of the thirty kids we're looking at, these two are bums, throw them out. People said, what do you mean? I said, this kid got a B freshman year in high school, obviously a dead B. And look at this girl, a B plus in phys ed and a B in reading. Ah, she's so below the grade. And they were looking at me saying, you're not serious. I said, of course not. Right, academically, how can you say that you failed the grade because you got a B plus once in high school as a freshman?
Absolutely. But not only that, ask the students who participate how much more they've enjoyed life since they've had an opportunity to participate. And I think that we're better serving and we're fulfilling their lives because they get an opportunity to participate in these activities that are really rewarding.
You know, and it's funny because certain things like, I am a chemist, I like science. The liberal arts stuff always confused me, seemed too hard. I mean, in chemistry, A plus B equals C. Didn't matter if B had a bad childhood or A came from a depressed environment, A plus B equals C. Once a year, I'd go over to the dark side of campus and do one of these psychology or whatever, get scared to death, run back to science. But I remember there was one course, art appreciation, and it was just, I had advanced Pchem, advanced organic, advanced synthetic, organic, and advanced inorganic. I said, I need something different. And I took this course figuring, I will never, ever care about learning art. And I remember it was an artist, Jackson Pollard, who urinated on canvas, and I never understood how you could call that art. But years later, we're sitting in the Quai d'Arcay, and my daughter is, my youngest, is walking me through the Impressionists. And I just sat there, I said, I remember this painting. You'd never think that you would ever take advantage of it. And here I am, you know, decades later with my daughter. The fact that this ten-year-old is giving me an art lesson, in a way, made me feel good that she was learning a lot in Milford. But, and you know, it did show me that there's more to life than chemistry.
Well, and it's interesting, I'm a psychology major, turned CPA, and I love to joke. You know, I spent most of my profession in internal audit, external audit, internal controls and compliance. And I probably use my psychology degree just as much as I use my business degree. So it is really the whole picture, and all of those skills are important in, you know, making you who you are.
One of the things that I remember, I mean, my daughters started in Montessori in Holliston because we really liked the whole approach of Montessori. And Milford back then didn't have full-day kindergarten. We came back, and there was a fellow that was principal then at Brookside. And I went in and Jose Viera sat down, and I asked him, I said, how do I make sure my daughter gets the motion she can get out of an education in Milford? And he said, get involved.
Absolutely.
What would you say to that?
A hundred and ten percent, absolutely. I think it's fantastic, you know, to be a part of, whether it's the PTO or school council, volunteering in the classroom. Where you have an opportunity to be in the schools and see what's going on. I think our PTOs are extremely active. I was actually just at the Brookside meeting last night and thinking about some of the things that they're doing for their student population, you know, helping their neediest kids in terms of basic supplies that they don't have. When you're able to understand that and certainly help those kids, that elevates everyone in that school. And the more involved you are, you know, the more you kind of know what's going on. You know what questions to ask your child, they're more responsive to you. Certainly, when the younger kids love having you in their classroom, I think, I have a feeling that's probably gonna fade out, maybe, in Stacy. But in the younger years, you know, they're so proud to have, you know, a parent or a guardian come in and participate in that.
But sometimes it doesn't because my youngest will tell me that she was traumatized as a child because she remembers the dance and the field trip, the field trip that I didn't go on. I was like, I missed one in all the years you were in school. I only missed one field, she goes, yes, and I remember it, that was child abuse. Or the one dance I didn't attend.
She's very lucky. I think, you know, as parents or guardians, you know, we are first and foremost our children's advocate. And so we need to be, you know, doing that if we think they have additional needs that need to be serviced or questions, we need to be out there asking and learning as much as we can. And, you know, a great example for me, Alice, I think I'm a fairly engaged parent. And I remember, you know, Rob's in third grade, and all of a sudden I realized, they expect you now.
Fairly engaged?
Yeah, fairly engaged.
That's like saying Hiroshima was a minor inconvenience to the afternoon tea. From what I hear, the word fairly.
Highly engaged. Prefer the. But, you know, really, they need now to sort of memorize their multiplication tables at home. Well, that was really something you did at school when I went. And so it took me a couple weeks maybe to grab onto that. And so things like that, it's great, the more we can communicate with parents. That's a potential item that we're considering next year for Woodland School Council, for the school improvement plan. How can we better, you know, engage and interact and provide program information to parents so they kind of know what's going on at Woodland? What can you expect from your third grader? You know, and really honing in on that parent-school relationship, so.
Now, a lot of people have no idea what the difference is between the PTO and the school council.
Sure, absolutely. So the PTO is the parent-teacher organization of a school, typically, they meet once a month. I like to think of it as, you know, fun and cultural activities, really student-wide engagement. Some of the activities are during the day at the school, a lot are on evenings or weekends, you know, fairs, carnivals. They'll run the Books and Beyond program, different activities within a school. The school council, they're really tasked with developing and helping to execute on a school improvement plan. So each school within the district has their own school improvement plan. And so the administration and teacher, it's comprised of administration and teachers, ideally a community member. And you work together to really come up with a few ideas in line with the district's overall goals about specific improvement ideas for that school. So certainly, you can be involved on both or either, and I would highly recommend participating in as much as you can. I really enjoyed connecting on a different level with the teachers and administration of the schools through those organizations. And our teachers and administrators work really hard.
You know, it always amazed me because I got more out of being involved in that school council than I ever put in. You know, because, again, I'm not ashamed of it, I'm looking out for my daughter. And knowing what's going on in the school, meeting with the school principal every four weeks, getting to meet some of the teachers, the curriculum heads, working towards the school improvement plan. Yes, I can say I did it to benefit our forty-two hundred kids, but I really felt like I was benefiting more my too.
I think you're motivated to be engaged because you have children in the system. But at the end of the day, every positive idea and everything that you can help influence, it benefits all of those children.
It was amazing. I mean, I was so happy, I mean, I got involved in everyone, and I got to know every field trip they were going on. Because for a lot of people, it's the soccer field.
Absolutely.
You know, that my darling bride would come home and say, oh, let me tell you what I learned today. Because I was always coaching, so I never had the chance just to sit on the sideline. But she would be with the other moms and dads, and it was amazing what information they exchanged, especially the new people to Milford.
Sure.
But getting on a school council, and I know a lot of people say I never have time, but it's only once a month, really, that you're committing to.
Absolutely, and I, you know, I have the same number of hours in the day as Mother Teresa, you know? And I hope that I'm using them wisely, but, you know, you choose how you spend your time. Certainly, if you're someone who works at night, that's probably harder, they typically meet at night. But I think in general, you know, as a general rule, I believe, if you want to do something, you can find the time to do it.
Yeah, I mean, realistically, we'd have to trade off sometimes.
Absolutely.
You know, she's traveling, I'm traveling. So if there was a meeting on the third week, I'd try and not be traveling then, but that means somebody had to be home.
Absolutely, and that's a good point. Now, you know, for me, the reason why I'm running now is, you know, next, in the fall, I'll have two children that are in school full-time, and I'm only working part-time, and so I think I have the bandwidth. You know, I think there were different times, you know, seeking my graduate degree or when my children were very young, it wouldn't have been the right opportunity for me to pursue it. And I think, you know, you have to assess all of that when you're taking on different commitments and say, you know, is it the right time where I think I can manage all this? And for me personally, the answer to that now is definitely.
Now I'll put you on the spot.
Absolutely.
Are we funding our school system at an adequate level?
You know, if you had asked me that two months ago before I started all these conversations, I would have said, I'm not so sure. Honestly, as a general rule, the teachers and administrators feel like they have the resources that they need. And, you know, I think that's, that's really impressive, and it says a lot to the hard work that goes into it on both sides, you know, from the finance committee as well as from those in the district. Certainly, if there was more money, there's more you can do. But I think in general, we have what we need as a general to be successful.
Do you think we ever have to use profanity?
Let's hope not.
Two and a half override, debt exclusion, because to me, those are the most profane words I can hear.
I think the better job we can do of planning, the more likely we'll be able to avoid that, absolutely.
Now, do you think our budget, if you had a chance to look at the way we structure the school budget? Because we have four different buckets. One is healthcare, and realistically, that is never a reasonable number. Yeah, I'd love to see it go up two percent a year, but.
I used to work for Benjamin Moore, and so we'd go to the financial managers' meeting with Warren Buffett. And I remember him saying, I don't know, fifteen years ago now, healthcare is gonna be the biggest cost for all companies by the year. I think it was 2020 that he used at the time, but yeah, certainly, it's a significant expense.
Then we have a second bucket, which is the mortgages, the bonds to pay for all the buildings.
Absolutely.
And we do that in the town. Then we have two. And then we have two, sped and ELL, and operations. The sped and ELL, we've always taken the tact that says, "You really can't control it, it's mandated by the state." I know a lot of towns literally put them together, and they say, "Okay, we're going to give you..." I mean, our school system probably averages four, five percent increase a year, if you really took everything.
Sure.
If we're lucky, if it's not six or seven, because the dang healthcare can go up seven, eight percent. You throw in a couple million-dollar payment for Woodland now, if you ever did the percentages, we'd choke.
Absolutely.
But that doesn't help them with their operational budget. Sped, you can get one kid that comes in and costs you a hundred fifty grand. But, one, you don't have a choice legally, but two, it's our kid, you know, and Milford's never not taking care of our kids.
Absolutely.
As it's structured, do you think we're approaching it correctly, holding the administration, you know, to two-point-something percent on the part they can control, and just telling them, "Okay, you got to lay out sped and ELL. If it goes up, we'll pay the difference, if it goes down, you owe it."
I think it makes sense, I think as a general rule, I like to see sort of, "Okay, these are all of our opportunities, and this is what we're leaving on the table if we don't explore potentially spending more," and really just doing, you know, a business case for understanding that. I just think everyone should be on the same page in terms of, certainly, we can hit that and we can stay within that, but this is what we're not doing, or this is another thing that we could consider, you know, over the next four years, we should think about considering this, and just looking at it a little bit more longer term.
Okay. In general, how would you compare Milford educators to the surrounding towns?
I think, my personal experience has been that they're fabulous, both in, you know, teachers that my children have had and ones that I've interacted with. I think we're very lucky to have people that are so committed to this community, serving in that role, because it is not an easy job.
Well, you know, when I think about it, I remember one event that kind of tainted me about how our teachers and our teachers' union are, because when we had a budget crisis, and for Milford to not have a big surplus, that was a crisis that one year, towns around us, the teachers were delaying their raises. And the union came to the FinCom and said, "If you promise..." We can't guarantee anything, because FinCom has no power. You know, I've always said there-
Town meeting.
Yeah, it's town meeting, because FinCom is a group, maybe most influential powerless people, because they have no power, out of fifteen of us, one gets to vote. But the union came with the teachers' backing and said, "If you'll tell us that you'll advocate for keeping that money in the school system to save our teachers, we'll give up our raise this year." I was amazed. You know, first of all, that employees, teachers would say, "It's more important for the health of our community that we keep the number of teachers than it is for me to get a raise." And two, for the union to lead it.
Absolutely.
How many towns around us would you expect that to ever happen?
Absolutely. And I think at, you know, at every turn, you look around, and they're active at, you know, school events, after-school events, weekend events, they're present, and the kids, everyone benefits from having that level of commitment and involvement, so yeah, absolutely, I think we're very fortunate. And I think we should do, you know, whatever we can in terms of professional development and supporting them to continue that level of commitment and engagement from them.
I think a lot of it happens to be that so many of them are from Milford or have ties.
Absolutely.
You know, so when they start talking about losing resources, it's people they know and value.
Sure. And if you're raising your kids in the system, certainly, you want the system, you know, to be as well-funded as it can, absolutely.
Any comment on Middle School East?
I had the pleasure of visiting there last week with Nancy Angelini, and she took me into the lunchroom, which was an intense experience when you get three-hundred-plus kids in that room, but, oh, Middle School East, I'm thinking Stacy, sorry.
You're thinking Stacy.
Sorry, I'm thinking the school we're actually using, I'm sorry. Middle School East, yeah, no, I'm not going to go there, I wasn't really privy to those discussions, so hopefully, it'll be used on-
Well, what did you see at Stacy? I mean-
A lot of kids.
Was Stacy there when you were there?
Absolutely, it wasn't in its current form, in fact, I went to the wrong door because of that, that's how long it's been that, since I've spent time at Stacy.
I mean, when I moved back to Milford, I actually got a complex, because West Street School, where I started, gone. Oliver Street School, where I went next, converted. Spruce Street School, now a library. Stacy boarded up. I said, "There's a trend here that's just..." But now Stacy incorporates the old Milford High and a connector. What did you find at Stacy?
It's going to need some update, would be my observation, I think they're using the space in the best way that they can for now, but certainly, it could not accommodate, you know, a larger population. We're using pretty much every available square foot in some capacity or another, so that'll be something that needs to get factored into sort of our overall plan.
Hopefully, not for the next eight years, because we've got to deal with the high school.
Understood.
Let us get through one before we go to the next.
Understood.
If you were to give one message, that, you know, you mentioned, "Science is important." I went into the science wing, and I thought it was really cool that it looked just like when I was there. And I turned around and said, "Oh my god, it looks just like when I was here." What message are you going to bring to the school committee about our science program and wing?
Sure, I mean, I think the wing is a larger, a larger item that'll need a longer-term solution, but certainly, there was money proposed in the budget for this upcoming year in terms of updating equipment and whatnot to really better prepare our students, so I think it's something that everyone is thinking about and trying to figure out the best plan. That said, I think it goes hand-in-hand with the larger plan for the high school, because it depends on how far down the road that update is. If that's further away, then maybe you-
Eight to ten years.
Right, then maybe you invest some more now to make that happen. So fortunately, there's money hopefully coming in the near-term future to get some equipment updated, so that the hands-on experience those students are having are more equivalent to the real world.
Well, you think about it, we've been putting away a couple hundred thousand dollars a year of a surplus. Parks Department wanted to turf a field, and we didn't have the million-plus dollars back four, five years ago, so we said, "Look, if we have a surplus, if you back off on your request, we will ask for some of that money to be tucked away." And here it is, four years later, we've got enough money. As a school committee member, I'm amazed that somebody hasn't come in and said, "Okay,